Here we go. Good afternoon. The time is now 1:19 PM and a former of the board is present. State Board of Education Regular Meeting of March 9, 2021 is reconvened. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There is one individual who wishes to address the board and that individual is Lupe Ramos Montini, who is very aware of the rules as she's heard them for the past eight years. So Lupe, are you there, Lupe Ramos Montini?
I am, I am. Good afternoon.
Hi, as soon as you're ready, go ahead and provide your comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I am here for many reasons, but first of all, I want to congratulate the two new board members and I wish you the best of luck as you maneuver through the educational system in the state of Michigan. You are in good hands with a wonderful staff and an outstanding superintendent. So I wish you all the best. And as you, as we continue, and hello, of course, to all the other board members that I work with. I know you're enjoying this day from inside, but I hope that you have a moment to go outside. It's beautiful day. But I am engaged now, of course, continue being engaged with the committee to honor Cesar Chavez. And what a responsibility I had as a state board member and you have now as the existing board, the aid board member. So today with that responsibility, we have to make sure that all of our students receive the best education possible. And we have students in our school system where they are American citizens, but their parents are under documented. And I am coming here to talk about those parents who work in the fields harvesting the crops or they work in restaurants, washing dishes and doing those kind of duties in that environment or in meat markets or in greenhouses and many other jobs that Americans don't really want to do. Now, these under documented workers that we have here in our country are many times not respected and not dignified. But we are very, very lucky that we had a man of humble beginnings that worked also in the field by the name of Cesar Estrada Chavez. Now, he wasn't a tall person. He was a small man, but he had a strong conviction that he was going to organize the farmworkers and he and Dolores Huerta were able to organize and establish the United Farmworkers. And the major thing that they were going to help them with were wages and housing. Now, during the pandemic, these workers were classified as essential workers. And they, of course, were under the advice of the governor to social distance themselves. But you know, in the fields, they're side by side, the roads are right by side. So they really couldn't concentrate on exercising that recommendation. Also, we were recommended to wash our hands for 20 minutes, I mean 20 seconds. And in the fields, you don't have clean, clear water to drink and much less to wash your hands as often as was recommended. And also, of course, the masks were something that the face masks were recommended. But of course, these workers that were classified as essential workers didn't have that luxury either. Now, as time progressed, water probably was in tanks maybe, was placed in the field and masks were given to them. However, these workers or the workers that supply food at our tables all the time, pandemic or no pandemic, we go to the store and there's piles of fruits and vegetables and we have to understand that those came from the fields and somebody had to harvest those crops to get to the store. And I'm just going to tell you one, everybody likes cilantro these days. That crop is harvested on their knees the whole day long because you know it grows low to the ground. But then we enjoy it here in the stores and then at our tables. So those are the people that I represent now, that I advocate for. And so on March 31st, we are celebrating the life and legacy of Cesar Chavez. Now, on December 3, 2003, Governor Granholm signed legislation establishing March 31st as the Cesar Chavez Day in the state of Michigan. And we were encouraged and we are encouraged to observe that day for our beloved labor leader. Also, as a board member, on February 11, 2014, we passed a resolution to recognize that local education agencies determine curriculum and strongly encouraged the inclusion of lessons on Cesar Chavez as appropriately referenced in the grade level content expectations and high school content expectations in the social studies standards. So different people have put the markers down. So our children, and when I say our children, I'm not talking about just these students that pertain to these families. I'm talking about students throughout, just like I as a young child in grade school and on up learned that George Washington was the father of our country. We want our students to also learn about contributions from all different ethnic groups. And so it is very important for us to advocate that our students in the state of Michigan are also instructed and also informed about people that contributed to the growth of our country and to our state. Now, on December, I mean, on March 31st of this year, the Committee to honor Cesar Chavez, and I am hoping that you receive the invitation that I asked Marilyn to send to you by email, that we're going to be celebrating Cesar's birthday. Now, we understand there's a pandemic and we cannot have a live community gathering. This is a yearly annual event that we have here in Grand Rapids where the community literally comes together from all walks of life, whether it be an elected official, city official, college president, university. Every community comes together. And so this year, as we lift ourselves in the spirit of our students, we want to recreate this in a virtual presentation. And so this is where you come to play. I have invited you to participate and sent you the link where you can register. I'm hoping I get a thousand people, students and just adults because this event is tailored for all learners of all ages. And we have to understand too, that the life and legacy didn't belong or doesn't belong to any particular group. Cesar's legacy belongs to the world. And here in Grand Rapids, we have a school named after Cesar Chavez. And the latest big event that we were so excited about was when President Biden put a bust of Cesar Chavez in his Oval Office. You know, I come from migrant farmworking family when I traveled from Texas to Michigan to harvest the crop. And when we see something like that of that magnitude, you know, it stirs us up inside and gives us the hope that there is this big umbrella that people talk about. So I'm hoping that you accept my invitation and you register to participate on March 31st from 10 to 11. And I'm also hoping that you encourage schools in your communities to engage their students to experience a Cese puede spirit activity. And so I don't know if I ran out of time or I'm on time, but that's my message for today. Unity in the community with a community gathering. So with that, I wish you all the best. I hope you have time to go enjoy the day and the best always to the State Board of Education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, former board member Lupe Ramos Montini for your public comment. We have no other individuals. If you could mute your, if you could mute your computers, if you're not speaking, that would be great. We're moving on. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of February 9, 2021?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Support.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Cratchit?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're at the point where we're at the report of the board president, Dr. Albrecht.
I just have a very quick report. Judy and I participated in NASB's Public Education Policies Committee meeting earlier. Well, I guess this was technically last month now. And both of us are working with one of the subcommittees to update some of the language and text around the PEP guidelines that you will see at, if you attend the NASB Legislative Meeting in October. So that work continues. And I just wanted to also congratulate the five districts, Benton Harbor, Detroit, Flint, Muskegon Heights, and Pontiac that are receiving the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. This is exciting news and we look forward to the great work that they're going to do with this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albrecht. We're at the point where we do report to the state superintendent. I would like to share for the board and the community just a few of the words that I shared at our Building Mirrors and Windows Conference on February 25th. You heard a little bit about that conference a few hours ago from Ms. Alice, Dr. Daniels, and Ms. Probst still. Here are a few of those welcoming comments. "We are here today because words matter and voices too. And in that spirit, I'd like to share the words from a voice that matters, Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, who coined the terms mirrors, children seeing themselves in their reading, windows, children seeing others in their reading, and sliding doors, children entering other worlds through their reading. Reading is so much more than technical skill. It's engagement with kids through the power of words. As literacy advocates, we know that words matter. As diversity in literacy advocates, we know that voices do too. It was Langston Hughes who wrote in Mother to Son, 'Well, son, I'll tell you, life for me ain't been no crystal stair.' And it was the same Langston Hughes who wrote, 'I too sing America.' Words matter. Voices too. It was Tupac who wrote, 'Did you hear about the rose who grew from a crack in the concrete, proving nature's laws wrong?' Words matter. Voices too. It was James Baldwin who wrote, 'God gave Noah the rainbow sign, no more water, the fire next time.' Words matter. Voices too. It was Gil Scott-Heron who wrote, 'I'm going to take myself a piece of sunshine and paint it all over my sky. Be no rain, be no rain.' Words matter. Voices too. And it was Nikki Giovanni who wrote in Ego Tripping, 'I am so perfect, so divine, so ethereal, so surreal. I cannot be comprehended except by my permission. I mean, I can fly like a bird in the sky.' Words matter. Voices too. Words matter. Voices too. What we read, who we read with children helps determine whether, how much, and with what passion our children too will read. This theme of what we read to our children, how we read to our children, what we share with our children is instrumental in the extent to which they will engage, not simply in reading and writing, but in the rest of their education as well. It is to relevance, it is to identity, it is to joy, it is to engagement, and it is ultimately to their rising. With that said, I'd like to turn to the report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano. The 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year will present his report. Mr. Bondano is an English Language Arts teacher at the Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. Ms. Sarah Soper, Region 8 Teacher of the Year is joining us from Northwest Community Schools in Jackson. She is an English teacher at Northwest High School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Teacher leaders, welcome.
Hi, sorry, it took a moment for my mute to go away. Let me share a screen real quick here with my presentation. There we go. As was just introduced, I am, of course, Owen Bondano, the Michigan Teacher of the Year for this year, and I'm joined today by Sarah Soper, the Region 8 Michigan Teacher of the Year. So as we know, come on, next slide. Thank you. There we go. As we know, March is Reading Month and those quotes that were just shared by Dr. Rice were wonderful. I got maybe a little bit teary eyed at some of them. Good selections, Dr. Rice. And in my room, I very much enjoy making March a holiday in my room. You know, I think February is a hard month to be a teacher. That long gray month of February, I think, leaves a lot of us feeling very tired and very, very much looking like the end of the school year is a far distant tunnel. And so I like using March as an excuse to re-energize my classroom, to have a lot of fun competitions with my students about reading, to really bring to the forefront this idea of reading for fun. You know, there's a lot of reading we do in my class, obviously, I'm an English teacher, that is prescripted by me. But the idea that reading is a thing you do for fun is a thing that is important to emphasize for student literacy. So one of the things I ask my students to do is to compile over the course of the whole school year, recommendations for their peers based on books that they've read. You know, what have they liked? Why have they liked it? We go over how you write a good book review. And I especially emphasize that in March, where all students need to be giving me reviews of some of the books they've read. You know, they can go over to the binder reviews to find their next book and so on. So this year, we had to do a little bit differently since we're mostly online, but we still figured out a way to do some book reviews together. And so for March's Reading Month, I thought I would just choose a couple of my students' book reviews and recommendations for you in case you're looking to boost up your reading list this month. So I've got four to share with you. The first one is from my student LaRania, and she read Howl's Moving Castle, which you may have seen the movie, but she read the book. And an excerpt from her review or recommendation says, 'I love the movie, but the book is so much better. Sophie, the protagonist, is equally powerful to Howl in the book. It's not just about love, it's about equality and choosing your own destiny. You should read this book if you like the movie or any other magical fantasy books or if you're a feminist like me.' So that's a great one to put on your list if you haven't read it already. Mariah would like to recommend Coyote America by Dan Flores. She says, 'I didn't read nonfiction books until this year, but this one surprised me. It's about how coyotes and humans have lived together for thousands of years. It made me think about my connection to all humans and our shared past. You should read this book if you like animals, nonfiction, history, or true crime. It's not true crime, but it reminds me of some true crime shows, so I thought that fit.' And on a personal note, I have just started this book myself, actually, based on her recommendation, and so far it is very good. The third book from Melvin is Cemetery Boys by Aidan Thomas. 'This book has a lot of Spanish in it, but don't let that scare you. Even if you're not Latinx, the family and characters in the book will feel like your family. At least they felt like mine. The book also does a good job with the gay and trans characters. The book makes all the magic in it feel like a normal part of the world and the characters' identities feel normal too. They were relatable even if you're not the same as them.' And our last recommendation is Miles Morales Spider-Man by Jason Reynolds, which was recommended to you by Cameron. Do you like superheroes? Doesn't matter. Read this book. Yeah, it's a Spider-Man. It's about Spider-Man, and if you like him, there's plenty of web-slinging. Don't like Spider-Man? No problem. This book is about Miles Morales, an Afro-Latino teenager who is struggling to balance what his family expects of him, what the world needs him to do, and what he wants. Spoiler alert, the villain Spider-Man has to fight in this one is racism, sort of. Just read it.' I hope that you will pick up one of the four books my students have recommended to you and celebrate this month with a lot of reading just for fun. And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Soper of Region 8.
So this is hilarious because I was not, I did not see any of the presentation beforehand. I did not see that Owen was going to be talking about reading. I didn't see that it was going to be about the doors and windows. And I feel like Dr. Rice basically was quoting off of my last slide on here. So this is an English teacher explosion today that we're giving to you. So I am from Northwest High School, which is a high school in Jackson, Michigan. And I've been there 16 years. This is my 16th year, hardest year I've ever had in my life. So I'm just taking it day by day and hoping to get through it. You can go to the next slide on. And I have, I had to put my family in here because other than teaching being my passion, I'm passionate about my family. So that's my husband, Adam. We've been married for 15 years. And then Quinn, who's the boy who's in fifth grade, and Reese, who's the girl, both are gender neutral names, so I have to clarify, who's the girl who's in fourth grade and they're best buds. So I'm lucky. We'll see if it stays. Go ahead on. All right. So this is me. Once again, as you can see, some books are in the mix here. I'm department chair of the English department. I think I've been that for five years now, maybe six. I'm link crew advisor, which what link crew is, is it is a group that helps freshmen transition into the high school. So of course, this was last year, this one, not where we're not wearing masks. And then this year, we tried to at least do a small, we're calling it the compass crew, just to at least help freshmen get around the building. We started a new trimester today and we had freshmen coming. We've been face to face by choice, or they could be virtual since day one, but we had some students who are now opting to come back. And so we have freshmen who have literally never set foot in our building. So these kids are still helping them transition. The role has looked a little different this year, but it's still a really important role in our school building. I teach a lot of different classes, but I mostly teach ninth grade and senior AP Lit. I also have some electives. I have a fun class that I like to teach called Books to the Big Screen, where we read books that have been adapted into movies and then we watch the movie. So the kids like the class and it gets them to read too. So that's just, that's just me and my work. You can go ahead. And then points of pride. So I'll start with the award first. I won the Excellence in Education, actually, the same school year, like it was the end of the school year that I got that. That one did give me $1,500. Regional Teacher of the Year did not. Just kidding, because people are always like, what's your award for this one? Because they saw you with a big check. And I'm like, I get to talk. That's my award. So, but it's great. I'm so, so thrilled to be part of this. And I am an AP reader, so what that means is I go in June, or now we are virtual, so I'll be at my home in June, and I grade essays for seven days straight. My best year so far, I graded 1,125 essays in seven days, which is the national AP test. So it's a pretty big deal. And then, of course, it helps my students to go south. And then I've also presented at the National Conference, sorry, the National Council of Teacher of English Conference. I did it on Teach Living Poets, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in the next slide. So as I mentioned, it's really interesting of all these things that came out because I seriously had a couple little notes and they were very similar to what has already been talked about today. Because my passion is with literacy, obviously being an English teacher, but specifically, and this has happened a lot through Nerd Camp Michigan, which is a, Colby Sharp, who's from Jackson, he started it with Donalyn Miller. If you know Donalyn Miller, she's a pretty well-known author. And this kind of helped me to gain my passion back for young adult literature and really for literature in general. And that just kind of made it more important for me for students to have access in my room. And basically, it just changed my world and now it's changed my classroom also. And it's funny because I wanted to go to the literacy conference. I wasn't able to because we were in our last week of the trimester. But the building windows and mirrors is a metaphor that I've used often because my main thing is I'm trying to always build my classroom bookshelf to have a book where any kid can pick it up and relate. So any kid should have one book or hopefully more that they relate. So I've been trying to get more and more diversity. I think I'm up to about 800 personal books in my classroom library. And so I'm continuing to grow. I've gotten a few grants and, you know, some donations and things, but a lot of it comes just from me. And it's just really important that access piece is important too because when you have a reluctant reader, especially like my ninth grade boys, if I can put something in front of them and say, hey, just try this, Miles Morales, or just try this, This Long Way Down, also by Jason Reynolds, who all the boys love, then they will oftentimes read. And I've had a lot of kids say to me that my class was the first time they read a book. We get our hands on them. Usually it's different during COVID, but we get our hands on them. They do book speed dating and they try to find things that they like. And then the last little thing is Teach Living Poets. It's a hashtag. You can look it up. It's pretty, pretty well-known at this point. This is actually my friend Melissa that I'm in the top picture with, along with Elizabeth Osovedo, who was the National Book Award winner a year or two ago. And Melissa's the one who started it, but that's what I helped present with. And the cool thing about Teaching Living Poets is I teach AP Lit, which about half of the test is on poetry. So it's really important that students analyze poetry. But in the past four or five years that I've been teaching Living Poets, students have enjoyed it more. We do blogs and we interact with other students. A lot of times we'll put tweets out and the poets themselves will interact with us. And it's been, they're finding connections because there's poems about current issues. There's poems about Black Lives Matter. There's poems about transgender issues. There's poems about all of these things that are going on that for kids, that's important. And I've had so many kids say that, like, that has changed them. This is, the middle picture, the large picture, is us actually Skyping with Clint Smith. He's actually getting to be quite famous as well. He He just came out with his second book. And we were able, a couple of years ago, to Skype with him, and he talked about all of our, all of his processes in writing his book and just the things that, you know, my students had great questions about writing poetry, and he was able to come up with that. So that's really it about me. Hope we didn't bore you too much with all of our Englishy talk, but it is March is Reading Month, and it is something not only that I'm passionate about, but that I've seen truly change the lives of some of my students. And so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you to our teacher leaders. So appreciative of Mr. Bondano, Ms. Soper, and, and your leadership in the classroom and outside of the classroom. It's helpful for our board, and by extension, our community, to hear and see your reflections on young people and what we need to do to engage them. That's really, really critical. A lot of what we do is at 10,000 feet, if you will. And, and yours is, is grounded. We appreciate that. It's, it's important to have both perspectives to, to do our work. So thank you. Thank you very much. We're members. We're moving on in the agenda. The next item on today's agenda is the evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. President Albridge will lead this discussion.
Thank you. Before that, I just wanted to make a comment about our Teachers of the Year and how much I really appreciated their comments about March is Reading Month. I'm always looking for great book recommendations, so I love the idea of having students recommend books to each other. We didn't do something like that when I was in school, and I, I think that would have been great. So kudos to you for thinking outside of the box to get students on a peer-to-peer level to encourage each other to read. So that's great. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, so every March, the State Board of Education engages in an evaluation of the state superintendent. Contractually, the evaluation is due by April 1st. And so today, we, we did that. The agreement between the board and Dr. Rice stipulates that based on the satisfactory or above annual performance evaluation of the state superintendent, the agreement shall be extended by one year, making the new ending date July 31, 2024. So I will make a motion, and then once it's seconded, we can open up for conversations, and I'll have additional comments to make. So the motion is pursuant to the agreement between State Board of Education and Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction. The State Board of Education has engaged in an annual evaluation of Dr. Rice and has found his performance to be satisfactory, or above, I would say. That is my motion. So it has been moved and supported. So I will just share what my comments were, for the most part, during the evaluation. I think overall, the evaluation had a lot of really positive remarks to share with Dr. Rice, and, and obviously, some additional comments to think about for future. So from my perspective, I just want to remind everybody that Dr. Rice started his tenure as state superintendent on August 1, 2019. So if you think about that and you do the math, seven short months later, we found ourselves in the worst public health crisis that this country has seen in at least 100 years. And, you know, earlier today, he was talking about, "It's been at least a year since we met in person for the last time, and following our last March meeting is when Michigan began to see COVID cases." So we've all been forced to do our work very, very differently, and that, of course, definitely impacts the state superintendent as well as all of the employees at the Michigan Department of Education under Dr. Rice's leadership. Once the pandemic hit, the department, really, the productivity has been, in my opinion, pretty amazing. The department jumped right in and, under Dr. Rice's leadership, provided numerous guidance documents to local districts, worked on federal waivers that allowed a number of different things to happen, helped schools provide food and assistance to students and families within days, literally, of going remote, and is now helping to get kids back into the classroom. At the same time, the work continued, the, the "normal," quote-unquote, work. So the department has updated the strategic plan with actual metrics, is focusing on student achievement. And as we saw today, just with the literacy piece, many of the metrics are heading in a much better direction than we've been, despite the fact that we are in an extremely challenging year and, and have really had to rethink a lot of what we do. So my personal comment is I really appreciate the leadership that Dr. Rice has provided. I, I think that he has done a very good job of keeping the board informed. He's addressed any concerns that I have brought before him. He and I speak, I mention this at least a couple times a week, and I never have to feel like I'm being, going to be surprised by anything that happens. So I just want to say how much I appreciate Dr. Rice and thank him for sticking it out in one of the worst situations imaginable and continuing with his, his leadership. So those are my comments, and I welcome comments of the rest of the board members.
Well, since everyone is so shy, I will jump out here. You know, there, we are in a strange time. And so, you know, not only were we looking at a pandemic, a global pandemic that we've learned so much more about since a year ago, we were also in the uprising as a result of the George Floyd case and, and other cases. And so we're at this very pivotal moment in time, and we've still been able to, you know, continue to move forward. And our children have definitely been at the center of our conversations. I do recall a year ago, and I remember having the conversations with Dr. Rice. I remember right before the first cases, having the conversations about the instruction and the guidance that was being provided to the schools. There was a time when we were giving schools instruction on how they could disinfect desks and clean off desks and making sure that they had the custodial staff to do that. And I remember having the conversation with Dr. Rice saying, "I don't think that that's quite going to be it. I think we need to give educators the, that thought, that they may have to shut down schools." And when you think about what that looked like, none of us could imagine what that was going to look like. And for Dr. Rice to have that conversation, and I remember the following day, or maybe, I think it was the following day, we had the conversation where I'm talking to Dr. Rice, and I'm telling him the NBA just shut down. The, in the, the college basketball, well, first college basketball said that they weren't going to have anyone in the stadiums. And then I remember telling him, "Hey, CNN's on now. NBA has shut down." And at that time, it was also being called a pandemic. And I say all that to say that as someone who's so focused on educating children, that me, public, I get public health, and I've worked in the H1N1 crisis. I've worked in Flint. You know, just those few things have helped me to better understand how much of an inconvenience these things can be. And it's hard to be able to pivot and get your mind off of the norm and making sure that our children are in classrooms and are being educated. But when you think about just all of those changes that were taking place so quickly, so to be able to, to get that and move with that, but also to have to steer a department and steer a whole education system, that's a lot. I mean, and taking, taking information from all different angles and viewpoints. But then also to set forth a course to strategize and make sure that we're looking towards the future and putting forward a, a strategic plan. So that's a lot. It's very difficult for people to understand this virus that we're dealing with because, you know, we think of it as single, just one single person. But this is a virus that whatever I do could impact multiple, multiple, multiple people. So it's not just about the fact that I can go in and I can be safe, but we have to also think about the, the transmission that when, when one person moves about what that, how that impacts so many other people. And I've found it, found that it's very difficult for people to wrap that around their head, even at this time, even with the, the millions of, of people impacted by this disease. And so I just would like to say that, you know, I, I, we appreciate your service at this time. And, you know, there's so much more that, that we want to do and move forward for our children, and I know that we will get there. But getting past this huge horrific time that we find ourselves in says a lot, to be at the, at the helm of, of the education system at this time.
Thank you, Pam. Judy?
Thank you. And I, I certainly echo Cassandra and Pam's comments and just wanted to add that leadership matters. And leadership matters probably the most during difficult times since our English teachers got us thinking about books. I got thinking about one of my favorites, Tale of Two Cities. "It is the worst of times and it is the best of times," and I think I switched those around. Dr. Rice probably remembers that line better than I do. But it has been both. Cassandra is right. August 1, 2019, A New Beginning, started talking about implementing or redoing the strategic plan or looking at it. And smack dab in the middle of that process, along comes a pandemic that none of us obviously wanted, and there was no roadmap on how to follow it. And we needed to, at that point, have a leader who would continue to focus on what is happening with the schools? How can we support our students? How can we support our families? What do we need to think about next? How do we react to that? How do we react to changes in policies or directives coming from not only public health, but from legislation, not only at the state level, but the federal level? The experience that Dr. Rice brought to the table at the beginning has certainly helped during this time. But I want to personally thank him for leading us, for being that steady voice. There have been difficult decisions. There's no question about it. The districts are overwhelmed. They are making difficult decisions minute by minute sometimes, depending on what their community is facing at that point. And yet, we needed a steady person at the helm, and Dr. Rice has been that individual, in my opinion. So I want to thank him for that. I also want to thank him for pushing us to remember that we did have a strategic plan and that we do need to keep forward-thinking because at some point, this will be over. And it's going to be different, and our education system should be different. Not massively different, but different in the way that we, teachers teach and students learn. And I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to that journey, and I am pleased that Dr. Rice will be leading us that way. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. I don't see anyone else in the chat. I know not everyone has access to the chat, so any other comments? Tom?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll be voting no. I don't think that the performance this past year by Dr. Rice has been satisfactory. I think it particularly, well, I mean, it started off back when there was a need for him to make a decision on seat-time waivers so that people understood seniors, were they going to get to graduate? Was there going to be, would, would the non, or the instruction that was going to be done through the internet, virtual instruction, was that going to count? There was a lot of uncertainty, a lot of angst. And so that was early on, that decision should have been made. It could have been made by him. And there's plenty of, of legal folks that believe that that's the case as well. But also, really, just, I, I think that there was a need for him to advocate for in-person and for sports. I think, did he drop the ball on this? The CDC has made it clear, and I've brought it up numerous times. I'm looking at their website that for, for children, the COVID is less harmful than the flu. This was something the CDC has said and has not retracted that. The CDC also, and I have the statistics very clear, said that, you know, people that are 50 or younger, which is about three-fourths of the, of the teachers, they, they have less likelihood of dying from COVID than dying in a car accident. So teachers, there are plenty of teachers. Some of them obviously have comorbidities. But if there was a will to really advocate for this. Now, I know that Dr. Rice couldn't make law, but he certainly could have pushed and been very aggressive at, you know, trying to do what I think student, what would have been best for students and for parents. And that would have been for advocating for not just in-person instruction, but also for, for sports, to really, you know, stand up against the governor's overreach of authority that was harmful to children. Also, I had, I had been asking publicly as well as privately for him to really push for options for parents. There were a lot of parents scrambling and wanting to do things at home, to get together, to hire somebody to teach, to work with a district. And, you know, there were, there were barriers, and there was just things that needed to be overcome. There needed to be leadership and provide options for parents. And there just, there was a lack of that. I did not, I was, took very strong offense to his interest in tracking homeschoolers that he's been making and pushing here recently. I, I know that it's, it's, it's phrased in, "Just want to count them," but I've seen things that, you know, "We just want to do this," but then government ends up doing quite a bit more. And, and so I know homeschoolers are very concerned about that as well. And then, you know, the Open Meetings Act, that, that meeting, I, I was not very happy with how that got canceled, which I think there was no authority to cancel, and I think that was acknowledged later. But we did end up having a, a meeting canceled. So I, I've been disappointed. I know that there are districts that are struggling to find, to get teachers that will come into classrooms. But, you know, I think that there could have been also advocacy to try to, to get teacher, to try to get options, just more options. If that's what's needed, let's come up with more options and, and really do what kids need and what parents need. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no and would, will be making a motion also to not extend the contract. Thank you.
Yes, I would echo much of what Tom just said, including tracking homeschoolers, but that's a, that's a debate for another day. I, I'd just like to include the, I'll read the responses that I wrote in his physical evaluation. "I express, given the opportunity to encourage sustained engagement of educators and students at the most imperative moments during our pandemic, which is directly associated with improved early literacy and the gap that widened as a result of the pandemic, as well as the springboard for all other items listed here in this evaluation. You didn't use the power position you had to urge the highest possible participation of all student groups. At one point, calling anyone focused on this from the beginning rabid individuals." I am deeply disturbed by that comment. Another comment I wrote was, "While our board passed an anti-bullying statement to encourage health, safety, and wellness of learners in the past year, we acknowledge the importance of this happening professionally with educational leaders. Yet you have sat idly by while multiple board members boldly act unprofessionally and appropriately and in a diplomatic fashion. It won't matter how you attempt to..." It won't matter how you attempt to lead learners if you are not able to lead the adults that are the example to our learners. I feel very passionate about the issues that have come before us and the things that maybe we should have reconsidered since the quarantine and very passionate about how we move forward. And really to echo your literary spirit today, words matter and voices too. And so regardless of how we move forward, I think, I think that really needs to be addressed, those two things. And I would, I'd be voting no on this initial motion and also seconding Tom's to not extend your contract.
Any other comments?
Yes, this is.
Yes, go ahead.
Member Tilly. I just want to say, I definitely appreciate your leadership. This has not been easy for any of us, this pandemic. We have not seen anything like this in our lives. And it has drastically changed our education system. You have stepped up to the plate and you've been on point. You know, I think the majority of people, if you look at Detroit Public Schools right now, they're returning to schools, but 20% to 30% of the teachers are only returning. The rest of the teachers don't want to return to the classroom. People are still in fear, and it's a real fear. This is not a made-up fear. We have data, we have numbers. You know, we've had outbreaks at numerous schools across the state, so we know that this is something that is real. So I appreciate you, you being there. At one point, you were literally updating us every single day about what was going on, play-by-play. And you kept us engaged, you kept us updated, and you kept the rest of the state updated. You worked really well with the governor's office to try to, to handle this situation that, the best that you could. And I think somebody said earlier that there's no instructions to this. This has not happened in our lifetime. And in recorded history, I don't think the world has seen a pandemic to this degree. So, so just trying to deal with it the best that you, you could, I think you made some really good decisions. And you kept your grace about it, even, even under attacks. And I appreciate that, so thank you.
Any additional comments?
Yes, I'll make a comment. You know, as a newbie to this board, Ellen and I, you know, I appreciate all that Dr. Rice has been able to do. As we said in our closed session, I talked about, education is, is close to health in this global pandemic. That's one thing that is common in this diverse world we all live in. You know, it's, it transcends race, orientation, socioeconomic background, religion, wants, needs, likes, all those things. Everybody has a desire to be healthy, and everybody has a desire to educate themselves and their children, everyone on this planet. So this is, was, in the fog of war during this global pandemic, there's going to be decisions that have to be made that history will only be able to tell if it was the right decision. You know, did we go left or right? Did we change? You know, but the constant updating throughout a pandemic, and it shows leadership, the ability to be nimble with a department that's as big as it is here in the state of Michigan. You're talking millions of students, teachers, the like. It's not an easy job, but I think, and I've seen, and you can hear now, you've done a fantastic job. I think the trajectory of, of where we're going is up, and that's all you can ask for. And I really appreciate you. I really appreciate your openness to the board, new board members like myself and Ellen, and, and all the way to President Albrecht. So thank you. And if we have a vote, I definitely will be voting yes to keep you.
Thank you. Pam?
This may be apparent to most, but I think that I need to say this. Dr. Rice, nor the Department of Health and Human Services, nor Governor Gretchen Whitmer caused They've responded to it. And, you know, when we look at just recently, when in November, wow, it was November, that we shut down for, or did the pause, and we had 70% decline in cases, and our hospitalization rates went up. There's another thing that I probably should say that I don't want to assume everyone understands. COVID-19, and the virus that causes COVID-19, has not gone away. A matter of fact, it's strengthening. And so I just think that we just, those are some things that we just all need to just make sure that we're on the same level of thinking on, that it wasn't caused by anyone here, and that it is not gone away. And so, and, and just one more thing is that there are some communities that if we move, the more we, all communities, the more you move, the more that it's going to spread. The last I looked, I'm sure we've moved up since then, we were at 11% of people who have been vaccinated. That was 2%, a little bit above 2% for African-American communities. I can't speak to the other, some of the other communities. I think it was a 6% for, for white persons that had been vaccinated. So we're not immune to this disease that's spreading, and, and it continues to spread. So I just wanted to just say that and add that to the conversation context.
Thank you. Ellen?
Yes, just a quick reflection on the process. The, as every board member knows, our constitutional obligation is to appoint a state superintendent and set policy. That's, that has, that has been done. And the, the policy as encompassed prior to my being on the board is, of course, embodied in the state strategic plan, the state strategic plan that we hear information on. In terms of evaluation, I would urge board members to look at the metrics that you asked yourselves, and now that Jason and I are on the board, we ask ourselves to be measured on, and look at growth in those, in those areas. A performance evaluation is not a, an index of happiness with the general order of things. I think we can all agree that, that education in the form of a pandemic is a most acute challenge. But again, I would urge the board members to look at the factors upon which we have asked the state superintendent to be evaluated on, as evidenced by the state strategic plan, to carefully look at the metrics by which those factors should be measured, and look for growth and improvement in those areas. Parenthetically, I will say that a majority of the board believed each, took those factors into consideration and believed that Dr. Rice performed not just satisfactory, which is required by the contractual language, but well in excess of satisfactory. And again, please be aware of process and procedure because that is the way upon which the state is asking for us to work and, you know, improve the educational opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, Marilyn, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, as soon as I unmute here. Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Six-two, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to, to not extend the superintendent's contract.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. We have Dr. Albrecht.
Not only does this motion violate the language of the contract, but I feel that it is completely inappropriate in the fact that it's clear that the majority feels strongly that Dr. Rice has done a very good job in the face of unbelievably challenging circumstances. And I, I certainly would not be supportive of this, but I, I think at the end of the day, I think we need to really think about the, the long-term ramifications of doing something like this, not only in the fact that it is, is a violation of his contract, but in my opinion, a violation of his, the language of his contract, but also could certainly impact in the future. At some point, Dr. Rice might want to retire, and we want, might want to bring on a new superintendent. And votes like this undermine our future in our ability to attract good talent. And I would just caution that there are, there are serious ramifications all around of, of meaning, essentially, what is essentially a, you know, exercise in futility. Thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I would just say that this is exactly what the contract calls for. The contract says, his contract is extended a year, quote, unless the state board votes to the contrary. So this vote is exactly what the, what the contract calls for, so I don't know what the previous comments were talking about.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder?
And further, just the spirit of consent of the governed. We are all elected public officials. We're meant to come to the board table and do precisely this work. It's not an exercise in futility. I'm very concerned that if you think this is an exercise of futility about what you even, how you value the consent of the governed to begin with. Because if Tom and I can't come to the board table and have this discussion without being considered the things that you've just discussed, what, what purpose would it be for us to have ever been elected and be here at this table? It's okay. It's okay for us to have experiences, to voice it, for it to be factual and evidence-backed and based. It's, it's not an exercise in futility. It's an execution of the due diligence that we were elected to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no other interest in comment, Marilyn, if you would be kind enough to take a roll call vote.
Lipton?
No.
If you'd like, just to be clear, the vote is a vote not to extend the contract. Marilyn Snyder, to you.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yeah.
Pritchett?
No.
Hugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
No.
Tilly?
No.
Albrecht?
No.
Two-six, motion fails.
Thank you very much. Next item on today's agenda is the approval of request to change the name of Lewis Cass Intermediate School District to Heritage Southwest Intermediate School District. Section 380.604 of the Revised School Code requires that an intermediate board of education obtain the approval of the state board of education prior to adopting a distinctive name. The Lewis Cass Intermediate School District Board of Education voted to rename the intermediate school district Heritage Southwest Intermediate School District. An approval from the state board of education is being requested during today's meeting. Our presenter is Mr. Kyle Garant. Mr. Garant, what additionally do you have to share with us on this name change?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I think the only thing I'd like to add was just that the ISD over the last six months has worked with the community to consider the question of renaming the ISD. They formed a community work group to explore this issue, and that community group ultimately made a recommendation to change the name and brought that recommendation back to the Lewis Cass ISD board for consideration and approval.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Garant. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? If not, hearing none, if I could have a motion to accept the name change as approved by the intermediate school district.
So move.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yeah.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Mr. Martin Ackley, our Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will begin this presentation, followed by Ms. Lipton, our chairperson, and finally, Dr. Pritchett, our representative to the National Association of the State Boards of Education. Mr. Ackley, to you to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. The Legislative Committee, State Board Legislative Committee met on March 2nd. We discussed some legislative items. Much of the discussion revolved around the resolution that the board adopted this morning, and then also discussion on the budget that Deputy Superintendent Garant discussed this morning. There is a bit of news. I just got a press release from the governor's office that she did sign the supplemental budget bills and vetoed House Bill, I think it's 4048, 4049, which was the tie bar bill. So that she, because in her press release, she said, because it's been 48 days from when she proposed the supplemental to when it was given to her, that she felt an urgency to sign the supplemental bills, but also veto the tie bar bill. And then she's also directed the state budget director, David Masseron, and Mr. Masseron has, has opened himself to any meeting with the legislature before by this Friday because the legislature goes on break in two weeks, and the governor would like to get everything wrapped up, like to get all the federal dollars appropriated so that districts, I mean, so that departments can, can use the money to benefit the state of Michigan. So that's still in discussion. I'm not sure if Brandy Johnson is still on the call. She kind of referenced this, this morning in a few comments, that she has more detail on this, but that's basically the detail that I know.
Mr. Ackley, to your, to your point, and we appreciate that update, to your point, Ms. Johnson is not with us currently. She had to step off the, step off the call, step out of the meeting. But we appreciate your update. Board members, any questions of Mr. Ackley?
So was that, so the veto, was it, was it the tie bar to the health departments for the closure? And then did it also include the, by March 22nd, the 20 hours? Were, were those together a separate, that was separate, 40, that was 4048?
So was that, so the veto, was it, was it the tie bar to the health departments for the closure? And then did it also include the, by March 22nd, the 20 hours? Were those together a separate, that was separate, 40, that was 4048?
She just vetoed 4049.
Okay, so 4048 is still there, the 20 hours by?
Yes, she did sign, she did sign House Bill 4048 and 4047, the two supplemental bills. So yeah, so yes, both bills got signed. And she also mentioned that when the legal review of this bill's budget boilerplate is completed, the governor will direct state departments to implement this legislation consistent with constitutional requirements. So I think they are still reviewing the boilerplate that were in those supplemental budgets, and that is going to be included in these further, hopefully further conversations between the legislature and the governor's office and the state budget office.
Okay. So just to be clear, what we talked about earlier today, what sounds like coercion is still there, that that would be what would be under review?
Right, right. She felt, according to the press release, she felt the urgent need to sign these bills, to sign the budget bills, to get the money flowing, what has been appropriated and now signed into law, and then the discussions are going to continue for, and updated another supplemental to come through to, you know, to spend the rest of the federal dollars. That's, that's all I have, Doctor.
Just, just one additional note on that. The legislation which the governor was considering signing into law would have required the authority over closures to devolve to local public health officials. The local public health officials, as an association, did not want that authority. That's an important thing to understand. That's different from other local decisions where local leaders have welcomed those opportunities. This is a different story, to a different moment, to different circumstance, and these local leaders, these local public health officials, did not welcome that authority at all and felt that that authority properly should rest with the state in this sort of circumstance in a pandemic. So I wanted to be clear about that, because oftentimes, you end up, not you end up, but one ends up looking at a world through a political prism. But most local public health officials don't view the world similarly. They view the world through a public health lens and what's best for public health. And the local public health officials outside of that political lens had a very different perspective. I wanted to share that. Ms. Snyder, to you for a comment and a question.
Just sort of a short response to what you just said. I appreciate the concept of understanding that difference, but still back to the whole idea of governed by those who give their consent. So I'm sure we'll hear about that in the coming months and in our future, what that means and looks like on the whole. Marty, I have a question for you and a couple of comments, just about the Open Meetings Act bill that was moving through. I think when I went back and read that, it looked more like it was a bill still rooted in how to handle online meetings, for whatever reason, during the pandemic or through July of some kind. So my comments are related to holding meetings or allowing the public body to participate in meetings in general via online as we move forward. And the only reason why I continue to bring this up is because even through our conversation when we talked about our bylaws and now just looking at that bill, it doesn't hold the truths that we've known about how viruses work, or how people with low immune systems work, or everything we've kind of talked about during the pandemic is, what does it mean for members of the public, public officials, teachers, students, family members to engage in their surrounding life in the way that it's safest for them? Because even when COVID is not something we'll call a pandemic, we will always have viruses and bacteria that we don't have vaccines for, and we will always have people who are dealing with low immune systems. So with that said, my curiosity is, is there any discussion legislatively? Or how can our board encourage that discussion well beyond the pandemic? And so that's just one question. But then the second question would be, how do we as a board start to move forward in the way that we meet? Because I think that we can start to meet in person. According to the data that we have really acquired over the last year, last month when I presented the hundreds of doctors and mental health professionals out of Ann Arbor, and most of them out of a public university hospital well-known in the state of Michigan, really do think that the risks certainly don't outweigh the benefits at this point in time for most of us. So as we move forward, is it acceptable for us to consider, you know, no harm, no follow, follow, if you want to participate or think you need to participate via online, you can do that, but let's start to meet in person. And then really have that as a basic reasonable policy as we move forward. So can we do that as a board, make decisions like that as a board, or shall we be bringing this to the legislative body as a reasonable consideration, given all things considered from the last year, essentially?
There have been a number of bills introduced to affect the current law that ends the virtual meeting for public bodies at the end of this month. Senate Bill 207 was just introduced by Senator Schmidt that extends that deadline to the end of June. There's also a bill to extend, to allow for virtual meetings for every public body except those that are elected statewide, which I think there are four of those. One is this body, and the other three are the three university bodies whose boards are elected statewide. That's kind of a selective bill, it seems like. So there's legislation that's been introduced. I don't know what discussions are being made or happening in the legislative leadership to address this, but, you know, we are, what, two, three weeks away from the end of this current deadline, and I expect that they will act in their last two weeks of session before their break to take action on something.
So, and the first one you talked about is simply just a bill that is associated with the pandemic, right? That's the one that goes through July, correct? It would extend it through July?
June 30th, I think, yes. The deadline back or forward, however you want to look at that.
And then the second portion of that, the second, I think you said Representative Schmidt is referring to, what was the second?
No, that was the Schmidt, that was the Schmidt bill. There's another bill. I don't have the number in front of me now, but that would allow for virtual meetings with public bodies except for anybody that is elected statewide, which of course is the State Board of Education, MSU Board of Trustees, U of M Board of Regions, and the Wayne State Board of Governors. Those four bodies are voted statewide.
Do you have any sense why there's that, why that would be, it would be for other elected bodies or public bodies, but not us?
No, I'd hate to presume that I know the reason behind that.
I'm not sure, like, if there's been discussion. So what would you recommend as the next step for encouraging this as we move forward?
Well, depending, boy, you're asking me to make an opinion on this. And I think that we should push it back. I think the legislature should push back the date beyond the end of March, because I don't think, based on the numbers that we're seeing, even though the numbers are declining as far as cases and deaths, I think we're heading in the right direction, according to the governor's numbers and the DHHS numbers. I don't think this pandemic will be over soon. All state employees have been told to continue to work from home until May 1st. So there's that. So I think that the, that the health experts don't expect an opening, you know, a complete opening until after March, the end of March.
Okay. So there's that, but then there's the concept of, again, the one thing that won't change, even when we're outside of the pandemic, is the idea that people with low immune systems are at risk when they're introduced to viruses and bacteria, period. So my curiosity is, what type of representative would you think, and I shouldn't say what type or who specifically, what committee or what individuals do you think would be helpful for us to reach out to, to have that discussion?
Those are general government issues that, let me find the...
And maybe if you can think about it, if we can...
So there's, yeah, government operations, yeah, the Government Operations Committee is where this bill, where these bills go, in the House and the Senate. I think what you're bringing up is public health issues, which existed pre-pandemic as well. I mean, people still, you know, had those conditions prior to the pandemic, and they weren't reflected in the Open Meetings Act back then.
Right. I definitely think our response at this point in time sort of honors reality that we, that we talk about how we, how we address it moving forward. Because even if the numbers, you know, continue to go in a certain direction and on a certain timeline in the pandemic lifts, that reality for those people will not, it'll still be there.
Yeah. Maybe it's always, and I'd have to check the Open Meetings Act to see if there's always an option for people to participate virtually, if people can, if people can, you know, watch the meetings online, or if they can even offer, offer public comment. I think Ellen has a comment.
Well, I think, I think Dr. Pugh has one, and then Ellen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
In order in the chat, yep.
I'll yield to Ellen, because I think that she...
Ms. Lipton, then Dr. Pugh.
Yes, under the current statute that was signed into law, I believe, the end of last year, the, the boards are to meet remotely through the end of March. They must provide a remote option to attend for anyone with a health condition through the end of the year. So that goes through, under the current statute, the current law, through the end of December. And it just says evidence of a health condition through the end of December. And then the current law also allows for people that are deployed, military people deployed overseas, to have accommodation in perpetuity. So that is the current state of the law. It appears that some of these bills are intended to amend the length of time for remote meetings for people who, A, do not have a health condition, or B, are not deployed overseas.
Thank you.
So I guess my comments are, and I know that this is, this is really hard stuff to comprehend, and I was just mentioning that earlier, and I think, Dr. Rice, you also mentioned that those of us who are public health people, you know, we don't look at this as a policy issue. We really do look at this from a science perspective. And as much as I love you, Marty, and I think that you are brilliant, you're not one of those people that I would depend on to answer the questions that you were just asked. You know, as far as what the legislature is looking at doing, yes, but as far as what we should be doing, no. But, you know, there's a lot of things to be taking into consideration here. Again, you know, 60 million deaths per day is a lot of death, you know, that's due to this virus. I think that was the last number that I saw. I've heard Dr. Fauci and others say, you know, we would like to see something at least around 10 million. Of course, you'll want to see it at zero. We're not gone from this disease. I mean, Dr. Rice talked about the map that he looked at a year ago, and how there's such a stark difference in, in where we were then and where we are today. So there's this issue of, yes, we want people to get vaccinated, and we've got to get the supply first, and we've got to get it distributed. And then, you know, we have to build up immunity to this disease. I'm talking about this disease. I'm not talking about the ones to come. I'm talking about this one that we're dealing with right now, and it is mutating. And there are various mutations that we're up against time, and I know you all have heard this over and over again, but I just want to say it on the record. But we are up against time to get people immunized using the safest means possible, which is inoculation through vaccination, and do that before it mutates. And then we don't know if the current vaccine that we have right now, the three that we have right now, will be successful in doing that. So it's not just, I'm healthy, you're healthy, but we can carry the disease elsewhere, you know. So there's many things that we have to look at as we talk about going back to normalcy. As much as I would love to see you all and get those great lunches and have great conversations, and I am a people person. And so I look forward to that, but I think that there's a lot that we have to look at. And I just have a question, a couple of more questions, if we're moving off of this, if we're open for other bills?
Well, I believe we are. I think we probably exhausted this particular issue. Hearing and seeing no additional interest, Dr. Pugh, back to you.
There was, okay, so there's the bill. I can't remember if we talked about this last time, but to regionalize the state board of ed, maybe we talked about that, you know, what's going on with that. I kind of like lost track of that. And then, there was one more. There was another, oh, if there's any movement on any of the building safety, like the water or anything like that, bills for schools. And then there was also a board that was created by the governor, and I don't think that we talked about that, that was education-related. And I don't remember what the name was. So those were just three things that, that I was just wondering if we have any insight on.
The building bills, I don't believe that they have gotten any traction yet. The state board bill has had hearings. I'd have to check and see if it has moved. It may have moved out of committee, but that requires the political parties, and it's rotating every, every two years. There, I think there are six regions in the state, and every two years, the parties will be required to nominate state board of education candidates from around the state. So that's where, that's what that bill does. I still can't believe that the political parties would want to restrict themselves like that, but that's a bill that is, you know, getting some hearings anyway. And then the third one was, I can't, I'm sorry, Pam, I didn't get that down.
It was an education-related board that was created by the governor, and I didn't know if Brandy, Brandy's probably not here back yet or here, but I can't even remember what the board, what the board was. And I don't know if anyone else does, but I can...
It was an advisory board, an advisory commission, I think, is what it was. I think it was to help schools, help, help understand how to get schools back into school, how to return to school. And I don't know, I don't know what, where that, where that group is, where that commission is in their, in their acts.
Okay. And my questions, follow-up questions to the two things that you just mentioned is, you know, just, you know, if we do get more information, how do we give input or make sure that we have a closed loop on that? I can't recall if I saw anybody from Michigan Department of Education or this board that was a participant in that board, that body. And then the regionalization of the board, I mean, if there's any, you know, as things, you know, if they progress, however they progress, if we could just get input on how that, how that's moving?
Okay. I see our legislative case on, go ahead, Dr. Rice.
No, so a couple of things. First of all, we can talk about the regionalization bill. First of all, we can talk about the regionalization bill in, in legislative committee. We'll give you an update pre-legislative committee. So we will share an update with you in the next board brief on that, on that piece. There's a lot of there, there. It's very interesting, and I'd like to do it justice. So we will be sharing with you, something with you, and then following it up with the discussion in legislative committee relative to the student recovery advisory council. Kyle Garant is our representative to that, to that council. It is currently meeting. There are seven subgroups associated with it. I will tell you that there is, I can't name a major education association that isn't currently engaged in some revisioning activity or another at the current moment. MDE itself has two groups working on this. The one group we're going to meet with tomorrow, the second group is all of the ed org executive directors, and so we meet with the one group one week, the other group the next week. So we've got two revisioning exercises going on, if you will. Others have their own revisioning exercises, and you point out an important revisioning exercise for which Kyle is our, is our representative. Yeah. Más preguntas? More questions? Once, twice, thrice? Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Drakely, stay with us for the, for the, for the late show. Chairperson Lipton, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. I thought it would be helpful, once again, to highlight some of the bills that relate to our strategic plan. And just to make you all aware of the bills that, that I believe are particularly related to the strategic plan, which, again, is the really amazing roadmap and just amazing work that this board did in, in putting that together with not just vision, but also with metrics by which to be measured. So I will just highlight just a couple in a, in a very robust group of bills that have been introduced and referred to the Education Committee. Primarily HB4156 would establish a minimum number of school counselors to be employed by a school district, ISD, or PSA, which, of course, relates to the metric pertaining to improvements of social and emotional well-being of students. HB4167 requiring annual inspections of all public and non-public schools for health and safety violations, same, same, same metric. HB4310, 4311, suspending the administration of the Michigan Merit Exam as a requirement for school aid funding for the 2021 year only. That, of course, aligns with the resolution that, that we passed earlier today. House Joint Resolution C that was put forth by Representative Hornberger, Chair of the House Education Committee, amendment to the state constitution to eliminate the State Board of Education, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the State Board for Public Community and Junior Colleges, and would replace those bodies with a director for the Michigan Department of Education, to be appointed by the governor. Senate Bill 121, introduced by Senator McBroom. Parenthetically, I will add that this is a similar bill. It's the exact same bill that Senator McBroom offered when he was over in the House, and myself and board member McMillan served with him. Require members of the State Board of Education to be nominated by regions but elected and serving statewide. I think I may have mentioned in an earlier that many bills get reintroduced and certainly taken over from the House to the Senate, particularly when a member switches between bodies. Senate Bill 184, bill to provide for clean drinking water in schools and childcare centers, same prong of the strategic plan as the earlier ones I discussed, health and well-being of students. And finally, Senate, Senate Concurrent Resolution 5, to urge the U.S. Department of Education to grant waivers for state assessment requirements under the Every Student Succeeds Act. Those are just highlights of bills that are, have been introduced that either pertain to the functioning of this body, but more importantly, those that pertain to the prongs of our strategic plan. Thank you.
Any, any reflections on the chairperson's report? Thank you, Chairperson Lipton. If we could pivot to Dr. Pritchett for the NASB report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Dr. Albrecht already mentioned, we are also on the Subcommittee of NASB, the Public Education Policies Group, and they have broken up into four subcommittees where we will be looking at some research and making some recommendations to NASB as a whole, which will be taken up in October at their fall conference. Those four subcommittees are Digital Equity and Access, Racial Equity, Addressing Learning Loss Through Acceleration, and Social and Emotional Learning. So we're in small groups, looking at those issues, and will provide some draft policy statements that, again, will be taken to the whole body. Just a couple of reminders, NASB does have what they call office hours once a month. It's an hour. It's, you can either join by Zoom or join by phone. That is this Thursday at 3:00. It's usually on a Thursday. What is this, the second Thursday of the month? So it's pretty regular. The purpose is to bring you up to date on federal legislation, so, and you can ask questions, et cetera. And then the NASB Legislative Conference is 21st and 22nd of this month also. I am currently registered, and I believe Ellen has registered also for that conference, which is obviously virtual. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any report, any reflections on Dr. Pritchett's report? It's a day of reflections. We are, we are a board of mirrors, hearing and seeing none. We are at that point in our board agenda with comments, for comments by state board of education members. You could put your interest in comments in the chat. You may be all commented out. If so, that's okay. Ms. Tilly, a comment?
Yes, a point of clarification. You know, there, there seems to be nasty and offensive things said at each meeting, and this one was no different. But the point of clarification, Dr. Rice does not lead the board. He leads MDE. President Albrecht leads the board. And none of us need to be managed. We are all elected officials. We all are here for duty, hopefully. We are, are all here on behalf of the children and trying to improve education in the state of Michigan in our own way. So please, enough with the disrespectful comments every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Anyone else care for a board member comment? Hearing and seeing, I'm sorry, Dr. Pugh.
I don't know if I have a comment, but questions. Is there any way, Dr. Rice, and I guess I could, I could email it over, that we can look at, like, how districts are, like, what's going on in the schools? Can we get that information as it relates to COVID, as, as the reopening, I'm thinking? And, and in particular, our partnership districts, because there was a report that came out, like, how is testing going on in those schools? I know from educators, I, I don't know if I reported here, but I did have an opportunity to talk to a group of educators where schools had already been open, some of the schools that have been open since, you know, the first time that they could open. And most of them, none of them were, were the partnership districts, and they were concerned themselves about keeping the three feet of distance. And so they were really concerned about other districts, once the March 1st hit, if that was going to be able to be maintained by districts who had less capability, meaning more students, maybe even less space to store items in their classrooms, because the classrooms needed to be cleared out. But I would just like to see how that's working. Is, is the distancing able to be maintained? What are we doing with the funding that was allotted to just assess the ventilation? Is that funding being utilized? And if it's being utilized, once the findings are made, is it, are they being able to, are they able, been able to address those issues? So just a better pulse on what's going on out there as we are seeing more schools opening at a time. I don't know what, you know, what, what's the direction we're going to go in.
Sure. So let me, let me just contextualize that. Let me begin with the fact that we're going to hear from Dr. Pearson, our interim deputy superintendent, director of the Office of Partnership Districts, and our interim director of the Office of Partnership Districts, Ms. Gloria Chapman, in May. So we, we do have that slated. They will be coming forward. They will be able to share a little bit at that moment. Know that of the 832 LEAs across the state, the 832 local education agencies across the state, most of them have been open for a good part of the year. They are not necessarily the largest of districts, but most of our districts have been open. The, the November-December period was, was certainly a, a change. But if you look at the Epic MSU reports, which we've shared with you, you can see a gradual, you, you can see an increase in the percentage of in-person options available up to and through the beginning of November, a dissipation in the middle to end of November into December, and then a reinflation of that percentage, January, February, and we'll get March data in a week and a half. What we know from last month is that 83% of our districts in March were, were offering an in-person option, five-sixths. And that's roughly what we were at in the fall, pre-second or third wave that shut all of the high schools down for four weeks. So know that for a lot of districts, often very small, they've had that in-person option from the beginning of the year. What we're seeing now is more and more larger districts, more and more larger suburban, more and more larger urban that are offering an in-person option. So that, that is changing what's going on. Moreover, we're having more parents who feel more comfortable sending their children back, right? In other words, they themselves have been vaccinated, their, their parents, the children's grandparents have been vaccinated. They feel more comfortable after several months at a distance. So we are seeing a reinflation, but we still have a good percentage of our young people who are being educated virtually. And I would submit to you that it will, it is likely that a good percentage will continue to be educated at a distance through the end of the school year. Now that said, we'd be happy to talk with you a little bit more about that. We could certainly have Catherine Strunk from Epic MSU come and share what has happened with the, the initial rise, the subsequent decline, and the re-rise of those percentages, share with you how the fact that a district is open and the fact that children are going to school in the district are two different things, in-person. So for example, Detroit was open from jump, but you had approximately one quarter of its children in-person and about three quarters virtually. So that a district is open and that the children are going to school are different. But if you have an interest in Epic MSU coming, they've done some really fine work in the data analysis. We would welcome them, and we think that that would be instructive for the board. With respect to ventilation, I can tell you that none of the ESRT2 money has been used for ventilation yet, because it hasn't been distributed yet. It hasn't been distributed yet because it hasn't been allocated by the state legislature. It's that, that whole conversation that we had this morning, and then subsequently that, that, that we had with Mr. Akley a few minutes ago. That's different from whether MDHHS has been active in this space. It has. It's different from whether dozens of districts haven't taken MDHHS up on the Department of Health and Human Services' offer to assess the facilities. But as we've talked, Dr. Pugh, you can assess, that's good, but beyond the assessment, it's important to get a reflection on, okay, now what? I mean, I may know I need a new mechanical system. That's different from having the wherewithal to put in place a new mechanical system. That's to the ESRT2 funds, number one. That's to school funding that is a little bit more equitable, number two. I mean, I, I started my career in a district where I sloshed from one part of the building to the other. The, when I say sloshed, I wasn't sloshed, and I wasn't educating children outdoors. I was indoors, but we had a bad roof. And when it rained, it didn't just rain outside, it rained in a portion of the building too. You know, that was Washington DC public schools back in the day. But we have districts in the state, they don't have a source of capital funding for their capital needs. In other words, they don't have a sinking fund, they don't have a, a capital millage. And as a result, they're left to try to provide for their buildings through their inadequate operating budget. But I'm happy to ask MDHHS back to talk specifically about ventilation, because I do think that's an important area.
Yeah. And I think, I think that the presenters last month laid out very well that we're talking about two different tails. They were very clear on that, that while there is guidance that's put out there, having the wherewithal to, to follow that guidance, it comes with so many layers of barriers. And the health of our children have long been dependent upon this and its success, but now where they're looking to return to those buildings, and they, they probably are not in all of the statistics that we're seeing, but we do know that the data that I have most readily available to me shows that the children who do have the, the greatest impact, adverse impact to COVID, 78% of those who die from COVID of children, you know, are those of color. And if we're putting them back into the schools, then we need to really be able to monitor what's going, very closely what's going on. And if we look at our data, too, we see that there's a... what's going on. And if we look at our data, too, we see that there's a high percentage of, of black children who have the adverse effects and have, have the underlying issues that would, that would also make them more susceptible to having adverse effects to, to COVID. So I, I just would appreciate, as we are looking to move in this direction, that, that we are really making sure that we're dissecting that information as, as best as, as we can. The, the exposure risk, or the things that will put us at greater, our children at greater exposure, and then like any, any health indicators that, that we could look at as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that with us. We will, as we debrief this board meeting and plan for next, we'll take that into consideration. I appreciate it. I do want to point out Ms. Soper's comment, if, if I could, in the chat. Our Region A Teacher of the Year, she notes that we in Jackson have been face-to-face since the beginning. I, I don't, I don't think she's going back to the garden, but probably the beginning of the school year, except for November slash December, except for that four, four-week period of, of time. So that, that is helpful perspective. And I, I think that actually, from a district perspective, that really is the rule. It's not the exception, it's the rule. Now, from a kid perspective, that's different, because while a significant majority of our districts have been in session most of the year, that's different from where a majority of our children have been educated. A majority of our children have been educated remotely, while a majority of our districts have been, have been open with an in-person option, as well as the virtual option also.
And I'll just say, and I don't think that there's clarity around that, number one. Number two, I'll, I'll just say again is that I met with some educators from across the state, and they just asked to meet. I didn't know what we were going to be, going to be meeting about. They were from rural districts, suburban districts, and they had concerns about the move towards opening all school districts, just based on some of the things that, that they saw. You know, one of the things that they did want to make sure of, that we knew, is that children, even children who are being taught at a distance virtually are learning, and that, that teachers are working very hard to make sure that our children are, are learning and they are seeing skills being developed. In a neat way, no, but, but they are seeing skills and, and learning occurring. So to, to, to our teacher's point of view, I, I did appreciate hearing from those districts and just hearing about what, what some of their, their concerns were. And what some, bus drivers, you know, they talked about buses, and, you know, keeping buses clean, the extra time that, that it takes, takes for that. They talked about children with special needs and the parapros and folks who have to care for those children. And oftentimes, they, they're caring for children who, who couldn't wear masks. So there were several concerns that they brought out, but I did appreciate those educators bringing up those different points that we should look at, you know, as there is this push to, to provide in-person education.
Right. I think, I think that we do, it is important to distinguish between schools open for an in-person option and parents availing themselves of that option. I believe that the push over the last two months to open up for in-person option is not necessarily going to change the percentages of children in districts that have been open the last six or seven months, but for that four-week period in November, December. What will change parents' minds in those districts that have had in-person options, for the most part, for the last six or seven months, what will change their minds is a sense that, number one, lots of people are being vaccinated. Number two, people are taking mitigation strategies seriously. Number three, there is proper ventilation. Number four, the schools have thought through all of the contingencies, all of the ways to approach children. Number five, the issue around spacing, that ideally you're able to maintain that six feet of social distancing, but that if you're not, you do the, you do the very, very best you can, and that minimally you are, you are masked, you are hand washing, you are disinfecting, you are working on the, the airflow as, as well. I think as parents reflect upon this, it's not so much, is the district next to me open? It's rather, what's my district doing that gives me confidence or, or not? I can tell you that the vast majority of the districts have been open most of the year. But the largest districts, not necessarily, Detroit an exception, of course, many of the largest districts not, and even with some of the larger suburban and urbans, there's a reluctance on the part of many parents to go back. But as these vaccinations go into 3 million, 4 million, 5 million, we're over 2.6 million now, today, as they continue to grow, I believe, all else being equal, there'll be increased confidence in the ability to go back. But that, but that, all else being equal is important. That means you don't take your masks off. You don't start pretending this is pre-pandemic with respect to space. You don't let up on ventilation and hand washing and disinfecting and, and, and. Those mitigation strategies are going to be with us for a period of time, not because we're skittish, but because we are following the advice of public health officials and the CDC. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, I just had a quick question. The, the majority of the federal dollars that will be coming to schools, they would be most, most effectively spent in one-time projects, correct?
I, I would say, yeah. So, so it's a good question. It's a little bit of a zen question. Let, let me give you, let me give you two quick answers to it. The first answer is yes. Not, non-recurring uses of, non-recurring dollars should be spent on non-recurring activities. Okay. That said, you can imagine some non-recurring uses of staff. In other words, if you were to say, we want to extend the school year by 10 days for one year, and we're, we're going to pivot back after that, that's non-recurring. It's in staff, yes, but, but it would be non-recurring. A boiler, a chiller, changing in windows. There are, there are school districts across the state, as you may know, you may not, but there are school districts whose windows do not open reflect upon this. So their ability to get good cross-ventilation in, in the, you know, in the spring and in the fall is nonexistent. There are many districts that don't have air conditioning. They have old HV systems, old heating and ventilation systems, no AC, so it's an HV system, not an HVAC system. So all of those are one-time projects that you could imagine one-time uses of funds on. But, but tutoring could be one-time for a year, additional tutoring, additional mentoring, additional summer school, additional literacy support, additional numeracy support, additional time. All of those would be appropriate one or non-recurring expenditures. Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Anything more for the good of the group under State Board Comments? Hearing none. Future meeting dates are Tuesday, April 13th, Tuesday, May 11th, Tuesday, May 18th, all at 9:30. The first two are regular meetings. The third is a work session. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn or me. The time is now 3:18. Let no one say we don't give you something back when you come to a state board meeting. Enjoy your extra time. Thank you, board members. Have a good day.